Regular session of Craven County Board of Commissioners, Monday, February 3rd meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes, here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would stand as the attorney, Mr. Brady, please us in prayer, and then stay standing if you would, so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious and loving God, look kindly on those gathered here and grant to all of us a sense of zeal and enthusiasm for the work you have called us to do. We are mindful and our hearts are grateful for the many gifts you have bestowed on us, both as individuals and as a nation and county, especially the gift of freedom, the gift of our abundant natural resources, and the gift of opportunities to pursue our hopes and aspirations. We ask that you continue to bless our country and our county and those who govern it, especially the members of this Board of County Commissioners. Bestow upon them true wisdom, understanding, and insight in their efforts to discern how best to serve the people of Craven County. Provide them with the strength and courage of will to promote the common good and to work for justice and peace for all people. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome you all to the meeting tonight, and we're glad you're here. If you would, make sure your cellphones are on silent, so as not to disrupt the meeting. Commissioners, you have your agenda in front of you. Does anyone want to make any changes, additions, deletions?
I recommend that we accept the agenda as is.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. The first item on the agenda is the Petition of Citizens Agenda Topics. Do we have anyone who signed up for the agenda topic?
No, sir, no one signed up.
No one signed up for the agenda topic, so the second item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and that includes the minutes of the January 21 regular session and tax releases and refunds.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Item number three is regarding tax. So Ms. Leslie Young and Justin Deese are going to lead us in that discussion. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Glad to be here tonight. Thank you for having me. Chairman, I have three matters that I'd like to bring before the board tonight. The first one is the cause of statute, 105 through 69, says that I'm to report the delinquent tax amount the first Monday in February. The second matter is I'd like to transition over into discuss, now that we have completed calendar year 2024, I'd like to discuss the real estate market, what we saw in '24. And then thirdly, I have asked our chief appraiser, Justin Deese, to come and update on a North Carolina Department of Revenue. We had a random sample and like to deliver those results to you, along with a trend that we're seeing in real estate that we think will affect our revaluation 2028.
Okay, thank you. First item is delinquent taxes? No, yeah, delinquent taxes.
Yes, sir. Delinquent taxes, and if you would, allow me just a minute as soon as I deliver the numbers to give you a little bit of information, okay? For this year, for tax year 2024, as of today, our delinquent tax amount is $3,375,861.43, with a collection rate of 94.36% in comparison to last year. And like I said, let me speak on it just as soon as I finish the numbers here. Last year, when I reported to you at this time, the 2023 delinquent tax amount was $2,45,130.97, with a collection rate of 96.18. Now, that is a difference of $1,330,730.46, with a collection rate difference of 1.82. No need to be alarmed, where we had a little bit of a delay, is typically it is our procedure to mail delinquent tax notices about the second to third week in January. Our plan was to mail these notices to remind the taxpayers that, look, you missed the January 6 deadline to come in the day after the Martin Luther King holiday. Well, we got interrupted with the snow, because it takes anywhere from three to five days to get these notices prepared and mailed. We made the decision on Monday, the 27th, when we returned, that it would be a bit confusing for the taxpayers if we went ahead and mailed these delinquent tax notices, where they would have maybe a day to get those paid, because on February 1st, another interest rate kicks in. Today, I went in, the file is created, and I looked for the file and the mailings to begin this Thursday and Friday. What I've offered, or would like to offer to you, is to show the impact of a delinquent tax notice. I'll be glad to come back the first Monday in March and provide the tax collection rate and the amount at that time. I want you to keep in mind, I have a taxpayer right now, habitually late, year after year, to the tune of $283,000, okay? Takes a little nudge at times. So we've got some taxpayers out there, and I want to give you one more number, well, two numbers, to tell you why I'm encouraged and I'm not alarmed by us being behind 1.3 million. Last year, we mailed 14,014 delinquent tax notices. This year, when I ran the file, we are mailing 13,635 delinquent tax notices. So we have fewer delinquent taxpayers this year, it's just some of those are more of our heavy hitters, and they will pay. They pay year after year, they're just always late, okay? So don't be alarmed. And again, when we mail these notices, it will be good through February 28. Keep in mind, my monthly report to county manager will be that first week in March, and in there, I will, of course, include the collection rate there, okay? So however you prefer. Chairman, at this time, is when I request to be ordered, statute says that I am to be ordered to advertise the delinquent taxpayers in the New Bern Sun Journal. To avoid that publication, payment must be received by 5:00 on Monday, March 31. We will be advertising this list on Tuesday, April 29 in the New Bern Sun Journal. In addition to that ad, I will be posting the delinquent list to all eight municipality town halls, the county courthouse bulletin board, the tax collection lobby bulletin board. It will be posted on our website, and then any other media that requests this list. So Chairman, at this time, I request to be ordered to advertise.
Okay, Board, I'll entertain a motion to...
Second.
Motion, motion, a second, to order the tax administrator, Ms. Young, to advertise the 2024 tax liens in the New Bern Sun Journal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good, thank you. Do you have the packet where you can pull up the agenda, the packet? Page two, the agenda. Got this, and then page two, the agenda. In this presentation, shifting over to the real estate, there are three matters here on the agenda, the Craven County Real Estate Market Activity for 2024, and then Justin will deliver items two and three, the Department of Revenue Random Sample, and then review the Craven County land sales. So what I'd like to do at this time is to just jog your memory, two years ago, actually, in February of '23, I came before you to give a revaluation 2023 presentation. And Robbie, if you'll... Three more, three more slides. That one. Can you blow that up just a little bit, enlarge it? Like the commissioners to be able to see that. This is what I presented to you two years ago in preparing everyone for the revow 2023. I'd like to bring your attention to two columns. That third column over is the percentage, fourth column over is the percentage increase. Remember how those were double digits, comparing one year to the previous year of just the average sales price month by month here in Craven County? Remember, this is from our MLS, our local MLS. So we had double digits of percentage increase, and our days on market most often were in the 20s, sometimes 30 days on market, very, very good market. I was asked about this time last year, what did I think the market would be in 2024? I said, well, I don't know that it'll be in double digits, but typically in a presidential election year, the market is fine, it just stays a little stable, okay? So you can see, Robbie, in the next slide, the percentage increase in days on market was just exactly that. We had many more months that were single-digit on average increase in value, okay? So it's not a bad market. We still increased in our value. It just wasn't the double digits like we saw for our revow. The days on market have increased just a little bit there. Instead of 20 and 30 days averaging on days on market, we're mostly in the 50 days on market. This is still a very, very good market, okay? So I don't want anyone to think that we're taking a downward turn. We are not, okay? Now, what I really want to speak on, if you will look at November, that percentage increase is 27.65%, with 49 days on market. You can see that November stuck out like a pink elephant in the calendar year. Let me, let me give you some numbers. In November, there were nine sales in Craven County that sold for $700,000 or more. Nine sales in Craven County sold for $700,000 or more. That was very extraordinary. So then I dug a little deeper in the numbers, and I found that we had 57 sales for calendar year 2024 that sold for $700,000 or more. Sounds like a good number. But then, when I pulled up 2023, I wanted to know how many sales in Craven County sold for $700,000 or more? 36. We had, in 2024, 21 more residential sales in Craven County to sell for $700,000 or more. Bring that to your attention, because keep in mind, that is a tremendous indicator of what the market is telling us. The market is saying, we like Craven County, we have confidence in Craven County, this is where we are investing our largest personal asset. So I want you to keep that in mind. I think this, I think this is another great indicator as to how exciting it's going to be in Craven County over these next several years, okay? So I want you to keep that in mind. Commissioners, at this time, if you have any questions for me in particular, I'd be glad to take any. If not, then we'll have Justin come on up.
If I have any questions.
Okay, all right.
That's not, you did a good job. So we, I did, I did notice when I was looking it over, that November number, and I was glad you clarified that, because I was going to ask you.
Yes, sir. All right, at this time, Justin, if you'll...
All right, good evening, Board. Thanks for having me here. It's good to see you again. I'm here tonight just to talk a little bit about, she said, revaluation updates and some sampling testing we've had at Department of Revenue. Like, decided to share these results. So the Department of Revenue asks each county to do a random sample study to test their data accuracy and how the correct information that we have on record a few years prior to each revaluation. And late middle of last year, they asked us to do one for Craven County. And you see here on the sheet, it looks like the next page, barely. There, this is probably... Is it in there, Robbie? Well, so we see here, this is the, this is the report that we receive back from Department of Revenue once our numbers are submitted. You see at the top there, data accuracy findings. And as a division, the appraisal division, we view this as a report card on how well our, our data is and how it's been historically. So in Craven County, for improved parcels, and these are parcels that had a structure bid on them, we have 42,553 parcels at the time that this random survey was, these samples were taken. There was a total parcel sample, it was 446 parcels, and that was both residential and commercial properties. Before we get into the results and what the Department of Revenue returned to us, if we go down to the bottom, it has the minimum accuracy percentage standards that each county should have when reviewing their data. Square footage data, they say the minimum standard is 95%. The objective data, they would like every county to have is a minimum standard of 95%. Objective data is just factual information. It is or it isn't. That's a deck, that's a porch, there's a pool, yes. How many bathrooms a property has. The next one down is subjective data. You see, it's a little lower percentage of accuracy there required. They would like us to have a 90% standard there for subjective data. And subjective data is really where it brings out the knowledge and experience of an appraiser. It requires the appraiser to be able to show discernment when making judgment calls on quality or condition. A lot of our training, that you all help with, our training and education goes forth, putting us like, having a better subjective data and being able to make those judgment calls. So go back up there to our findings. For square footage data, again, the required, minimum required is 95%. Our accuracy was at 96.41%. The objective data required minimum is 95%. We were at 98.5%. And this is the objective data, again, that was the one down below that gave us the best, gave us the most, you know, the higher range of being as accurate, 9%. And that was one of our best scores. We're at 98.37% accurate. And what that does is, it just shows how we've been consistent through the years before me, a long time, with how accurate, or quality that we're assigning to buildings and the condition. So we're very proud of these numbers, and we just wanted to be able to share that with you. And as we move on to the next screen, I'd like to discuss what we are seeing, what we are seeing in the current real estate market concerning land sales, particularly large tracts, 10 to 50 acres. I have a... Yeah, is that the end of it? Yeah, there should be one more, like, there you go. If you can kind of zoom that in some. So these are some interesting sales that we've seen over the last two years that occurred after our effective date of current revaluation of January 1st of 2023. They're not in year order, but it did come, start from north of the county and wind our way down. So the first sale there is in Township 1. This occurred middle of 2023. It's on Highway 43, north of Wilmar Road. It sold for $167,500 for 21.85 acres. That's $7,666 per acre. Sale 2, this is in Township 3. I would like to make a little correction to the record there, if you'll have this piece of paper in front of you. That's parcel 3-03629001, instead of the 3-306 there. That was an error on my part, my apologies. And this is on Willis Road, just south of Coast City. It sold beginning of January of this year for $160,000 for 12.6 acres, and that's $12,698 per acre the person purchased that for. Sale number 3, we have Township 9. This is on southwest Craven Middle School Road. It's beginning of 2023, but after January, the sale price of $100,000. It was 12.86 acres and sold for $7,776 per acre. What's interesting here, is if you look up sale 2, it's roughly the same size parcel, 12.6 acres, both in rural settings, two years apart, almost exactly. Sale 2 was $12,698 per acre. You see that $7,776 per acre purchased in 2003. Sale 4 here, we're in Township 2. This is off of Territorial Road. Sold November 26 of '24. That's our price of $100,000 for 10 acres, well, less than $10,000 per acre. Sale number 5 was in Township 6, and that was in September of '24 for, sold for $340,000 for 42.55 acres at $7,991 per acre there, and that's on Tebow Road. And the last sale here, we have in Township 5, down Adams Creek Road. Sold in late 2023 for $258,000 for 25.85 acres, the sub price of $9,981 per acre there. Those are the sales we have here, and these sales don't mean that every tract in the county is going to sell for this price, 10 to 50 acre tracts. As part of our due diligence in analyzing the data, we will look at these and see how different areas might be affected. And again, this is what the market's telling. The market changes every day. We'll continue to watch this leading up to our 2028 revaluation date, but we wanted to bring this to your attention so we could know going forward how the market was going. But that's what I have for tonight. You have any questions?
If I have any questions for... I guess you guys did a good job. No questions tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Justin.
Appreciate it.
Item number four, under departmental matters, is the sheriff, actually, the chief deputy.
Yes, sir.
Chief Deputy Cummins is going to come and speak to us about a Chevy Tahoe truck purchase.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner, excuse me, Chairman and Commissioners, the Sheriff's Office is requesting approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $19,087 to complete the purchase of a Chevrolet Tahoe truck that will replace a total loss vehicle number 829. The insurance check in the amount of $33,920 will cover the majority of the cost of the vehicle, and our state substance abuse tax funds will cover the remainder.
So I don't have to cover any of it?
That's correct.
Oh, I like that. We have any questions for, no?
Move to approve.
Approve this request.
Move to approve.
We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. You got anything else you'd need to share with us tonight? Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item under departmental matters would be social services, approval to add, to add awarded funds to the 2425 budget for the sobriety treatment and recovery teams program. Mr. Jeff Merritt.
Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, thank you for having us. We bring before you a budget amendment to add $275,470 for the START program. Our department was applied for this grant through the Department of Health and Human Services, to where they would award up to 10 counties the opportunity for, to obtain this funding to start this program, no pun intended, to implement this program in their child welfare program in their county. I'd like to tell you a little bit more about this program and why we think that it is going to be beneficial with us serving those families and children in our child welfare program. You've heard me come and talk to you about how substance abuse is the largest contributing factor to child abuse and neglect and dependency in Craven County, and I would dare to say throughout North Carolina. Approximately 60% of our children in care had substance abuse, is the sole or contributing factor because of their reason coming into foster care. And that doesn't count the other families that we're working with, children who are not in care. Our county actually started looking at this prior to this grant even becoming available to the state. We just seen that the methods that, conventional methods used weren't having the desired effect that we wanted to in trying to keep, keep families together and treat the substance abuse of those parents, and hopefully prevent children from coming into foster care, if that can be prevented. So we heard about the program actually in Buncombe County, and I reached out to the director there at the time, and they told us about, you know, over time, the successes that they have with implementing this program with their families that they work with. And I just want to point out, Sherry Daniels, who's our deputy director, she was with me on those conversations, and we started trying to see if there was a possibility that, how we could get this program in our county and use it with our families. We were moving along, and then the state said, we're putting out this RFP, or proposals for this grant funding, and that kind of stopped our ability, so we had to kind of, you know, to do it independently. Close the entity that provides technical assistance and oversees this program was involved with the state. So we didn't want to have an unfair advantage if we were going to apply for that, for that program through the state. So nonetheless, we did that, and we were awarded that grant, and we have been working with the Child and Family Futures, who is the entity that oversees the fidelity of this program, and working with Easter Seals, who would be our contract provider, and would, we would contract with them for part of this program, which I will, for individuals and employees, they would have, and also the services. So I'd like to tell you a little bit more about the program and how we intend to implement it, if you have some time. So Robbie, you see our first slide, if you'll go to the next slide, please. And I'm not going to read this, read all of these, I'm just kind of going to go over it, so you see our agenda. Robbie, next slide, please. So this is a little bit of a background about where, how long START has been around. This isn't a new program. So as you see, it's been almost for 35 years. And it's been used throughout the country, in North Carolina, Buncombe, and now there is four other counties besides us. We are the closest to sign a contract, other than one other county, who's been awarded the, through this grant with the state. So next slide, please, Robbie. So a little bit of an overview, and some of the goals to start. It's really a different approach than, a more intensive approach on working with our families than we do now, and what we're able to do with our integration with the substance abuse disorder and mental health provider. The goals to start, as you see, this is the goal of all child welfare, ensure child safety and well-being. Another thing is that we try to decrease out-of-home placements. And that's to try to prevent children coming to foster care. Now, there may be times where children have to reside temporarily somewhere else until the substance abuse can be addressed and treated, and the risk is not at a level that would have major safety implications for a child in that home. Reduce repeat amount treatment, you know, what we see now is that, you know, that we see a trend, is that there is, we'll work with a family, they'll work on their substance abuse treatment, we get done working with them, and then, you know, relapse may happen, and there's no that support that when we go away. And this is something that, as you'll see, that rate of recidivism is lower than what it would be without this program. And so those are some of the main ones I want, I won't read all of them. So next slide, please. So how does it work? It's, of course, it serves families with parental substance abuse disorders and child welfare involvement. Each family has to have a child, at least one child, under the age of five. And it's really promote, trying to promote recovery, improve their parental capacity, and keep children at home when it is safe and possible, you know? That's the important key. It's not that if you get this program automatically, your child's going to be able to stay with you. We're always assessing for safety throughout this whole process. And if it's a safety issue where the child can't stay in that home, you know, at that time, then we'll make that decision. It's not this, you know, but we're still keep trying with the services and working with that parent and trying to, you know, get those services back in place to reduce that risk, and we'll keep monitoring. I want to make sure that's clear. So as you see right there in that bold, you know, it uses an accelerated timeline, and we'll go over that, you know? Currently now, when we work with families and we become involved, they're in the same queue as everyone else, you know? Sometimes it could take months to get a substance abuse assessment, just depending upon what the need is. Here, as you'll see in the timeline, you know, treatment and intervention happens very quickly. And that's really important in that substance abuse recovery model, that when, you know, you have that crisis, that you act... when, you know, you have that crisis, that you act upon it then, because that's when you have the highest, you know, highest percentage of that parent setting to change. You see some of the strategies there, collaborating, as we talk about multiple partners, our court partners will be talking with them. It's really going to take not just our agency, but numerous other individuals. I want to point out one, our family mentors, these are one of the positions that Easter Seals will be hiring and will be contracting to pay those individuals. These are individuals with shared experience, child welfare involvement, substance abuse, substance abuse issues in the past, and now they're in recovery, they have to be in recovery, I think, for at least a year. And they'll be working in tandem with our social workers and with that family, as that family navigates the substance abuse and mental health system. And a support with someone with lived experience, and it's also another set of eyes with us that, you know, looks and gives us, you know, hey, we kind of see something that may not be, that's getting ready to happen, or maybe happening, that, that, you know, helps us ensure that children are safe at home. So, I won't go over all that, but any other questions on this slide? Next slide, please. The social components, this is a lot of some of the same information. One of the things I want you to see that we haven't quite gone over yet is to start DIAD. That DIAD includes a supervisor, that family mentor, and that social worker, who will all be working together on that case. Everything else we've kind of already covered here. So, next slide, please, Robbie. So, some of the results, and when I spoke with the director in Buncombe County, you know, they've been doing this program for some time. One of the things is that we want to try to do is prevent children with CAN from going to out-of-home placements and in our custody. As you know, that's very expensive, I've been up here the last two years asking for additional money, you probably look at our budget, and you'll go over it this year and see how our foster care board payments and those lines have grown, you know, as I talked with those in Buncombe County. Once you get this program implemented, and after a number of years, that number starts to go down. If we can reduce our foster care population by twenty percent, you know, you'll see a big return on investment, I think, in this program, and we're not spending any money on it. So, as you can see, in case closure, permanency, more than seventy-five percent remain with or reunify with their parent. I don't have our percentage now, but I would guarantee that that percentage is much lower than seventy-five percent when we don't have that program. So, you know, what this is helping to do is that we're getting that parent in that recovery, having sustained recovery, they had to have sobriety for a year, and making that home safe for that child to remain with that parent, increasing that parental capacity, and hopefully, and reducing their re-involvement with our agency because of the same issues. And hopefully, you know, I'll just say, we see instances where we may be dealing with the mother now, and her child, or the father and the mother and their children, you start looking up the family tree, and it's gone for generations. And so, this is certainly something that we, we can help break that cycle. Parental capacity, recovering capacity, as you see, the mothers in START have higher rates of sobriety versus those not in START, almost by thirty percent. So, there's, and the last one, paternal investment, for every dollar spent, they two dollars and twenty-two cents, and we talked about that, you know, you start looking at less children in foster care, we may not, you know, may need less workers over time, you're spending less money on board payments, you know, there's other costs that we have to pay for, for our foster children in our budget. So, once those numbers go down, you know, hopefully, you know, will, there'll be not only a social impact, but also a monetary impact as well. Next slide, please. So, this goes, Child Family Futures is that you see is a natural home, they provide technical assistance as part of the grant with the state, that is, the state will be paying for that, so we'll have regular meetings with them, our teams will, as we start working towards fidelity to model. And that's the entity that we were talking to prior to the state putting out their RFP. Next slide, please. So, this is the timeline, I won't go through all of it, but you'll see forty-five days is the length of, that we, that state gives us to get our assessments done, unless there's extra records or something that we need. But as you can see here, you go within twelve days of that case being closed prior to day thirty-eight, that parent's already in intensive substance abuse disorder treatment. Could be sooner than that, I mean, just depending upon how soon we get that referral, how soon that we see the, the need, and how soon we can get them in. Now, when we contract with the Easter Seals, in addition to the two family mentors, there's a service coordinator that helps kind of fast-track that individual into those services through port, which is a substance, you know, they merged with Easter Seals, I believe, almost two years ago. And then there's a clinical supervisor that looks at each one of those cases to make sure they're getting the appropriate clinical services to meet their needs. So, we're really excited about this. Again, you know, sometimes in the assessment phase, when we find a need and we do referrals for services, we can't even get them in forty-five days, and now you're already, now you're already getting at least four sessions in that intensive substance abuse disorder treatment prior, you know, almost thirty days in. That family mentors we talk about will take them to that, you know, there's going to be a lot, a team, we want to talk about some of the requirements, there's going to be a team working with that family, and really trying to be very intense, especially in, that is opening days and months to try to help embed that treatment in them and give them the support they need. So, next slide, please, you'll see some of the roles that kind of says that. Our social worker, whom we employ, will work with that DIAD and with the family mentor. Talks about early engagements, of course, face-to-face visits, that's already part of our policy and mandates to the state now. We talk about child safety and well-being, that is always the top focus in everything that we do. So, we talk about generate referrals, some of these families will be in court, so that's part of our regular duties, too. You know, we talk about support to relatives, caring for the child when appropriate, we always try to find appropriate relatives who are willing to care for the child instead of that child during foster care, when we can find them. Next slide, please, Robbie. So, this is our START family mentor, one of the four positions that these funds will help to, these funds will help to cover, additionally with some overhead costs. So, you see what that family mentor does. I want you to, if you'll please go down to the fourth bullet, and third and fourth bullet, so, you know, they're really helping that parent navigate that system. This is a system they've already been through. As you see, they do a warm handoff, they call it, so those first four substance abuse disorder treatments, like those intensive outpatient treatments, they're going to drive that parent to that treatment. So, you know, that parent's not having to go there themselves, you know, they can ask questions, do all those things. They also make some face-to-face visits, you know, sometimes with our social workers, sometimes by themselves, and we're working in tandem with us to ensure that children are safe and the parents will cook and focus on the parental recovery. Next slide, please. So, these are some of the services that they'll receive, you know, there's going to be a substance abuse disorder mental health and trauma assessment, is what we see in a lot, in many substance abuse disorder cases, trauma is an underlying factor, and there could also be a corresponding mental health diagnosis as well. So, finding out what assess, what those issues are there, and then trying to look at those services to tailor those. Look, you see at the client level, that treatment, it's just, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of things here that really focus on identifying the appropriate treatment, making sure you have a good assessment, and those parents begin that treatment very soon. That's the key, that's the key there. So, next slide, please. So, minimum work guidelines, outlines the standard, so you can see, we'll be, the family mentor and the social worker will be meeting with the family very frequently, at least, you know, sometimes it may be more with those cases. And then, you know, we, those meetings help us determine progress and visits, and when we can reduce those. As I said, sometimes the, the family mentor and the social worker go together, sometimes they go separate. We understand that, we understand our role and our ultimate decision-making in, with children in parental custody and staying in the home, and sometimes then we also, there's a, there's a certain level of, it's adversarial, you know, we're not going, not going to sugarcoat it, there's a certain level of that, but that family mentor sometimes is not quite as adversarial, where maybe they, you know, they may open up to them a little bit more. But we make it very clear that, look, you know, we're working together, and child safety is going to be the top priority, and if there's information that comes out, they'll, they will share with us, it's not some type of entrapment to where, hey, look, if you tell us something, we're not going to tell you, and then they turn around and do that, because we don't want to lose that trust. So, next slide, please, so if you'll see, you see those meetings? You know, that safety meeting starts within three days of the referral, so we're, we're really starting this program fast, ongoing. CFP is a child family team meeting, so we have those, we, we utilize those meetings now, and there's a little bit quicker timeframe, so within thirty days, and at least there's, at least every ninety days after that, up to eighteen months. As we know, as part of recovery, relapse could happen, and we'll talk about that. So, those, if that does occur, you know, there is a plan there where we will meet quickly, and we'll talk about that as well. You're talking about, if there's child visitation, we really try to meet those goals anyway, so that wouldn't be something that, that wouldn't be something that will be any different than what we work now. Transportation, we talked about that, and drug testing, you see those require, those requirements there. Next slide, please. I think this is important to show, because, you know, it's not if, but when we're going to have a case with a parent with relapse. So, you can see, if there's a positive drug string that we have, we get notified immediately. We, we would do this anyway, where we would make contact with the family, and we would assess for safety and the parent's status. You see that emergency CFP, we're going to have to look at that, have some real candid conversations about what we need to do to make sure that child's safe. Talks about a certain, if others, if other entities learn about it, such as us or the family mentor, but the biggest thing is that there's going to be a quick meeting, and we're going to be assessing, and, you know, really, and, you know, we're going to have to make decisions based on the information that we get, as to the safety of that child. But also focusing on what treatment interventions we can put in to try to get that parent back on a successful path to recovery. I want to, you know, that's also a very important factor of that, too. So, next slide, please. So, you know, there's two different types of plans there, that kind of outlines both of those when it comes to relapse. Any questions there? And then finally, next slide, Robbie, and this will, there's going to be a lot of stakeholders here, so here you see, we're going to have to use all of our resources in the county, outside of the county, and we'll be talking to individuals who provide these services, our court systems, as you can see, our health department, we'll be talking with residential treatment facilities, our managed care organizations, we have a list of providers we're going to be reaching out to, if they choose not to use port through Easter Seals, to let them know about this program and how they can work with us. So, we are, well on our way to doing that. Next slide, please. As you say, some of what it takes, strong leadership and coordination component. Our caseloads, that says twelve, our caseloads are actually ten for this program, for in-home services, where it will be adequately staffed, we've already identified two workers, and they've been in meetings, and a supervisor, our program manager, our program administrator, our deputy director, Sherry Daniels, so we've had people ingrained in learning about this program, and they're very excited. And you can see, there's, of course, there's budgetary needs, and we've got that covered here for the foreseeable future. So, I'm not going to go through all of those, but those are some of the highlights. And that's really what I wanted to come and kind of give you a quick overview of that program, and what these funds are for. Just a reminder that this program runs on a federal fiscal year, so that federal fiscal year will end in September, so it goes into our next fiscal year as well. So, are there any questions?
Questions? Lot of information.
Yes, there is.
Absorbed, yes.
Can a family opt out of the START program, and then if they do, what happens?
They opt out of the START program, we're still mandated to provide child welfare services, so they just would go through the regular service resource, resource referral. This does not mean that individuals can, you know, can just completely evade our services.
Can't bypass the system.
Right, they can't bypass the system. And we, and you know, that's a decision we're going to be working on, because we want to try to target families to where they really want this service, and now, we're only going to be able to add one case a week, so, you know, we're not going to be able to, every family that comes in initially to start doing that, we have to have a little bit of economy and scale. But we want to, you know, it may be something that we look and, and talk with the family and offer them these services, and they say, I don't want that, I don't want to work with that family mentor, and we say, okay, but it may be some that we offer it, and, you know, and they say yes, and we, you know, and start working with this program. But no, it won't be some Commissioner Mitchell where, if they say no, then we're not involved with their family anymore.
Okay, and my other question on the peer support specialist?
Yes.
Is that program, that certification program exists over Craven Community College, am I correct?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Okay.
I can look into it, but I'm not.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but that, in contracting with Easter Seals, they would be, they know, they're working with us on the requirements, and they would actually be hiring.
There is, okay, but, but there is a, a local certification source, correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker? So, you, what I see here in the budget, you have year one, year two, you're going by the federal budget tier calendar, correct?
Yes.
What do you have to do as far as future funding? Are, are you automatically in the pot to receive future funding if funds are available? Or you have to go back through the process, reapply, and how's that work?
I've talked with the state, they haven't told us about what future funding looks like for this program. I'm going to be honest with you, there's been some discussion about using some 4E funds, but nothing concrete has come out, I will tell you that.
I'm sorry, one last, what is the number of families that you can serve under this program? Because you said you could bring in one a week, does that mean fifty-two total? Does that mean twelve at any one time?
Well, there's a caseload standard that we try not to get above ten, so if that worker had all ten START families on their caseload, for two workers, it would be twenty.
Okay, so maximum number twenty total at any one time?
Yes, and when we're at full capacity.
At full capacity, and they're going to be in this program for a year?
Year, eighteen months, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
One more question, what was the total amount of funding that you're, you're supposed to be getting? I mean, I, I know what we're proving today, but overall.
We received additional funding, if you look on, we didn't include this in the contract because this reimburses for salaries, that's already budget, it's just another revenue source. If you look on page forty, that's where it starts, and you will see some of those administrative funds, so the additional funds there. In addition to this, on page fifty, under year two, would be those funds that we will be able to pull down for the child welfare supervisor, the child welfare social worker one, and the child welfare social worker two. Seventy-five thousand, four hundred for one social worker, seventy-five thousand, four hundred for another, and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five for that supervisor. The rest of those admin funds and overhead costs are in budget amendment, because those will have to be new funds that will be a pass-through for us to pay Easter Seals for their services they invoices.
So, yes. So, Jeff, year one, we're a hundred percent funded, or close to, year two, we're not sure?
Well, we're already in year two.
Already, I mean, that's why I meant to say year two.
Yes, but yes, our year one where we can follow funding, yes.
Yes, but year two, we're still a hundred percent funded?
Well, we're, we're funded, we're funded through September thirty of twenty-twenty-five.
So, that's two years. I'm getting lost in numbers.
No, I mean, we're in two thousand twenty-five now.
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be two years.
Yes, across two fiscal years for us, yes.
For the budget amendment, the money now, we're just adjusting for the trial program you currently got, correct?
Yes, for this current fiscal year, and then, as we talked about, you know, with next year, if we, the monies that are still left over budgeted, we'll roll, we'll roll those over.
You need a motion to approve? Yeah, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
The impression I get as we go through this, and as I read through it earlier, is that the sobriety and recovery, so we're talking both alcohol and drugs here?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any sense on which would be predominant? I mean, where would the majority of these families be?
Depending upon what substance that, that they're having a use disorder with, is that.
I think that's what he's asking, what?
Right. You know, that's hard to, that's hard to say, you know, the majority that we would probably work with is those who were having substance abuse disorder issues with ethanol and opioids, that's the prominent, that's the prominent substance that we see. But, you know, it could be methamphetamines, cocaine, any of those, alcohol.
Because this program, you have to, the family has to have a child between zero and five, right, birth in five?
Just one child.
Just one child, right. So, a lot of the children that are being acknowledged in this program will be the ones born with drugs in their systems, and is that correct? And is that correct?
That's correct. That family would be eligible. If we have, you know, we give you that information on substance affected infants in your report. And those would be families that, you know, would be eligible for this program, given if we have the capacity to serve them.
How many families are, or how many families do you have that would qualify for this program?
I can't give you the exact number, but I would see the number of reports that will qualify and we would definitely be able to meet.
Okay.
Two a week for those two workers, those two workers. Yes. I mean, to get to twenty, we would very easily be able to get one a week.
Yeah. Or paying, it had nothing to do with this, but how many foster children do we have?
Currently, right now, I think the last number that I heard was ninety-seven. And we'll be getting that number very soon for the end of January. I believe in their report, the last number was ninety-three.
And how many foster homes do we have?
I would have to look at that number, Commissioner Mark, it's between fifteen and twenty. I can't give you the exact number.
Okay, just matching it into it.
Yes.
Reality is, we could use more foster homes.
We could use more foster homes. I will say that a number that we were, that we tracked, about fifty-three of those children to be placed outside of Craven County because there's not a suitable placement or available placement here, so.
Got you. Any other questions? Okay, we're being asked to approve a budget amendment and the amount of two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy for the START program.
I'm going to approve.
And a motion, we got a second. Madam Clerk, please call the rolls.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Thank you. And I will definitely be sure to update you as different funding and the programs and give you an update about where we're at. So what our next steps will be, we'll start doing a contract with Easter Seals and get that executed and so we can start with the hiring process and hopefully be able to serve families as fast as we can.
Very good, yeah. Keep us up to date.
Will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number six, appointments. Commissioners, if you'll look under pending, we've got about six or seven spots that we're going to be needing to fill under current. We'll start with the Fire Tax Commissioners Board, three members at Township nine, are seeking reappointment. Howard Carrier, James Cherry, and Chris Register. I believe they're in your district, am I correct here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would nominate each of them.
Okay. Anybody have any other nominations? Okay, by acclamation, they will be approved. The next one is, I believe yours, Commissioner Mitchell, Dallas Brown seeks reappointment. Township eight west New Bern Fire.
Yes, I recommend that he be approved.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Okay, by acclamation, he will be approved. Next one, Alan Gaskin seeks reappointment.
I'll approve that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, by acclamation, that would be approved. Next one, Donald Shannon seeks reappointment. Commissioner Howard, I believe that's yours.
I'd recommend him.
Okay. He nominated, and if there are any, any other nominations, okay, then he will be approved by acclamation. And last, Township two, Little Swift Creek, I believe that's yours again.
I'll appoint that one.
Okay. Chris Weatherington. And any other, any other nominations? No? Okay, he'll be approved by acclamation. Under the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, Roger Weatherington, Weatherington, and Carl Jarman seek reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate both.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, they'll be approved by acclamation and then Carlos Kalazowski, how do I do on that?
I would nominate Carlos Kalawos Chesky.
Kalawoski.
To fill the vacant seat in Township five.
That's a tough one, okay? Any other nominations there? Okay, he'll be approved by acclamation. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Annette Laraquinte, vacated seat and best power seeks to fill the vacated seat. Anybody know her or?
No.
We'll have a nomination.
This is really handled by, not by us any longer.
These individuals are vetted through the Council on Aging.
Right.
They have to go through sort of an interview process within which this person has completed.
I would make the nomination.
Okay.
Second.
Got a nomination and are there any other nominations for that seat? She will be approved by acclamation. Coming up, Local Emergency Planning Committee and County Board of Adjustment are two spots that will be coming up. Anybody else have anything on appointments? Okay, anything else? County Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have three items for your consideration this evening. All three deal with county-owned surplus property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. For all three items, we, particular property jointly with the City of New Bern, who has already given its approval. The first property is an initial offer to purchase, one zero zero six Williams Street with a parcel ID number of eight oh one four two seven nine. The initial offer amount is three thousand dollars. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were two thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. The tax value of this property is six thousand dollars. I would suggest the board move forward with giving initial approval so we can get it out for upset bids.
Okay, got a motion and a second. And it's this initial offer to purchase real property, parcel eight zero one four two seven nine. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Item B.
Yes, sir. The second one is also an initial offer for seven two four Oak Street with a parcel ID number of eight oh oh seven two oh three. The offer amount is three thousand dollars. The original past due taxes foreclosed upon and the cost of that foreclosure totaled three thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. And the tax value on this property is six thousand dollars. As with the other one, I would suggest the board consider granting initial approval.
Okay. Initial offer to purchase real property, parcel eight zero zero seven two zero three. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Third item.
Yes, sir. It's a approval, a final approval, if you will, after the expiration of the upset bid period. It is for five thirteen First Avenue. The initial offer was two thousand seven hundred dollars and that was not upset, so it became the final offer. Oh, I'm sorry, there was an upset, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars, which became the final bid. The original past due taxes and the cost of the tax foreclosure together were three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents. The tax value of this property was, is five thousand four hundred dollars. As with the others, I would suggest the board consider giving its approval so we can get this one back on the tax rolls.
Okay, parcel eight zero one two A two two five, do I have a motion?
Some.
Got a motion, we got a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, petition of citizens, before we call you to the podium, I just want to make a couple of comments. Each speaker should address the board as a whole and not any individual commissioner, any staff member, or the audience. And you have three minutes. Please be courteous in your language and presentation and abide by standards, accepted standards of decorum. So who do we have tonight?
Chairman, we have three citizens desiring to speak tonight. The first is Cassandra Bennett.
I will give your name and address and the topic that you're going to address. Then pull that microphone down a little bit, the attorney's a little taller than you.
Personal address or Craven Smart Start's address?
Smart Start's address is fine.
Okay. My name is Cassandra Bennett and I'm the Executive Director for Craven Smart Start. Our address is twenty-one eleven F News Boulevard, we're in the old Montgomery Building. So I wanted to come tonight to bring your attention to a decision that's been made by the North Carolina General Assembly to stop the Dolly Parton Imagination Project. For seven years, North Carolina has been working with Dolly Parton Foundation to supply books for children age one through five. Every month, these children get a free book in the mail. Craven County has three thousand eight hundred and forty-eight children currently enrolled as of January. We have been mandated by North Carolina to, or informed by North Carolina that the program will end June thirtieth of this year. And the children that are currently enrolled, we will continue to supply books to them for the next two years, based on five hundred thousand dollars that NCPC out of Raleigh was able to pull together. I, I just want to say that this program has been very, very good for the Craven County. Governor Hunt, back in the nineties, started Craven's, the Smart Start program, based on educators saying that children were not ready to come to school. And so early literacy and early reading skills are so vital for our state test scores and for our children academically. I hear reports from parents that their, one, one was that their toddler was sitting on the bottom staircase step, holding a book and babbling as if reading the book. So it's very, very important that children have this exposure to books at a very early age. Sixty-seven percent, we've gone from forty-five percent to sixty-seven percent of parents who are now engaging with their children for reading. They read to their children, they point things out to them, and it's all part of the reading skills. Children are learning to turn the pages of the book with their fine motor skills. Children are in love with reading. I have a two-year-old grandchild who is so smart and, and it's because her parents engage with her. And they read to her. And I, I just can't say enough about the importance of us in Craven County continuing that program. I write grants, but we are going to need some funding in order to continue the program at some point. So I am working really hard to make sure that our children are taken care of and they get what they need. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, next we have Mr. Ray Griffin.
God bless you, we love you and come to you once again, just on the Ten Commandments. But I was listening to these other people, I was listening. I've been in the prison system for over twenty-four years, volunteer program, and I've seen alcoholics and drunks and we've worked with them over the years. And the worst one that has to suffer is the child. Approximately two million adolescents, pediatric children are being killed, dying in many different ways. It's the second leading cause of death for children and young adults ages ten to twenty-four, causing more death than any single major illness. Twenty-two percent of high school students report having seriously considered suicide in the past year. Child, childhood suicide is a risk factor, including mental health, prior suicide behavior, trauma, peer pressure, and family-related problems. We see that all the time in the household. I got a daughter that works for Craven County Health System and she's, has to go everywhere every night and then pick up children. But what I'm talking about is a free program, the Ten Commandments. We can put them into schools, they can read them, they can look at them. And people say that, well, it's posing problems. I've been to the crew board education and they simply say, well, it caused too much controversy and it caused too many problems. But where do we start at? Our children need another chance. Why is it in nineteen eighty they were taken out, but yet they were so good for over, what, forty, fifty years and all of a sudden they become no good? The Ten Commandments are still assets. We still need to abide by them and look at them and let, one senator made this statement. He said, we've tried everything we know how to do to help our children and we've tried and nothing seems to work. Now we need to put the Ten Commandments back. I thought about this prayer here by, many of you may know Dale Evans, and she wrote this, she said, read it and pray. I want to be a part of the answer. I want to keep Old Glory flying high. I want to keep a flame to torch our freedom. I want to pass it on when I die. For there is so much good in this country, but all you hear about is the wrong. I want to hear a cheer for the nation. I want so-sang her Star Spangled Song. I love the thirteen stripes of red and white that represent a courage fight. To put the fifty stars on the patch of blue, fifty states for me and you. And for the troubles we have, there's a solution. For God has given a book to show the way, they read the Bible and wrote the Constitution. We better start to read and pray. We need to start in our schools. Never have we seen so much sentiment, I'll be honest with you, I had a granddaughter that graduated a while back, couldn't even hardly read or write. What are we doing so wrong? What have we changed? We need to get back to the basics of teaching some good fundamental ethics of school. I was in a school up in New Haven, Connecticut, you had to fight your way in and fight your way out. It was hard to learn anything when you're all the time wondering if you're going to make it home without getting hurt. I talked with one of the board of education ladies and she said, my greatest fear is that the school is going to get shot, shot up, or somebody's going to bring a gun to school. So think about it, let's put the Ten Commandments back in, let's work on it. It's a great thing to do and there's no reason why it can't be done if we all work together. Let's work together, we can do it. We've got, you've got, in God we trust, we've got the Ten Commandments in here and we can put the Ten Commandments in school, there's no law that says we can't. All we have to do is post it with individual documents of others and it can be done, it's already been physical in Louisiana, some other states are doing it. So I just asked today to think about it. The Ten Commandments, we need them. And everybody agree to that?
Agreed.
We need it. We need it in our school system because our school, our students are being, I hate to say it, just whitewashed. I mean, I know it's sad, walking to school, they're getting shot and hurt and they even scared. So think about it, put the Ten Commandments in, work with the, I'm going to hit the board of education, different counties, in different places, carrying good results. And it's free, it's going to cost you very little to do it. So think about it. Very little money it would cost to do this.
Okay, your three minutes are up, Mr. Griffin. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, our last is Ms. Kelly Muse.
Hello, everybody, I'm Kelly Muse, I live at six twelve Mattamore's Lane. First of all, I'm very concerned over the fact that we've had no word from our sheriff on our escaped violent offender. But he felt comfortable enough to leave New Bern to go to the legislative reception and it seems he spent the night there because three different people passed him on his way back into town the following day. Chief Deputy Cummings was here tonight to talk to us about replacing a Tahoe, which I understand there was an insurance claim. But if you looked at the fleet of vehicles our sheriff's department has compared to what other departments use, way more cost-effective options, I should say. Ford Explorers are not near as expensive as fifteen hundred trucks and Mustangs and Tahos. I know what a Tahoe costs, I drive a Yukon, similar. There's been a mass exit of staff at the sheriff's office, five deputies, is my understanding, has left in like a week. It's also my understanding that he's acting a lot like our previous superintendent of Craven County Schools, he's more concerned with what's being said than what the problems are. We also had a missing SRO from New Bern High School last week, when there was a fight first thing in the morning. It's my understanding that that SRO was sent to Riverside Leadership Academy. You guys are also aware that the school system has a safety grant where we pay Craven County Schools SRO salaries. There are two elementary schools over on that side of the river, Branson and Creekside, that the SRO could have been pulled from, but the choice was made to pull an SRO from a 1,500-count high school, where we know there's gang activity, where we know that there's drugs being dealt, where we know that there are violent students attending, but we're going to pull an SRO from there. That's great thinking. The final issue I have is that Chip Hughes has plastered his name all over every single vehicle that is owned by the county, paid for by my tax dollars, which aren't late, by the way. So as a taxpayer, we have a problem with that. No other sheriff that we have ever had has plastered their name all over law enforcement vehicles. So what happens when Chip isn't the sheriff anymore? How much did it cost you all for those little stickers with his name all over it? And that tells me a whole lot about what Chip thinks about Chip.
Okay, next item on the agenda would be the county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, just one brief thing, I just want to remind the board, on February 17th, which is your next Commissioners' meeting, at 10:30, we'll have a ribbon cutting for the new courthouse annex across the street. We look forward to that, we've invited the judicial branch and also our legislators to be here for that. We'll also follow that up with a legislative lunch, with our legislators talk about priorities for 2025, long session. Okay? All I got, sir.
That's it?
That's it.
Very good. Okay, Commissioners' report, who would like to go first?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mark says. Mr. Mark says nothing to report.
I have one thing.
Okay.
I'll be hosting a town hall meeting this coming Saturday at the Harlow Community Center with Darlene Gibbs, the new Board of Education District Seven representative, and the sheriff is planning to come to introduce everyone to Deputy Goodrum, who will be patrolling that area out there. We're going to discuss county updates and the relationship between the county commissioners by state mandate, and that relationship between the county commissioners and the school board, and we're also going to discuss the relationship between the county commissioners and the sheriff's office in relationship to our road deputies.
Good. Mr. Smith?
I had a town hall last Thursday, January 30th, and I feel it was successful, we had about 45 citizens there, and it was a joint town hall, this is my first experience with a joint town hall, that is, I have District Three, Alderman Best, who I think is two, Alderman Best and Alderman Royal are in my district, that's District Two and District Five, I mean, Ward Two, Ward Two and Ward Five in my districts, and we had a town hall together, which worked out just fine. We talked about current issues, and it was of interest, and it seemed to have been successful, and everyone seemed to feel like it was appropriate to do it that way. I don't know if we'll be having another together anytime soon, but as far as I'm concerned, it worked very well.
Thank you. No report?
No report. Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, this is a public safety issue. As I drive around New Bern, Martin Luther King, Glen Burnie, Country Club Drive, all of the main thoroughfares through the streets on this end of the county, I very frequently see ambulances and fire trucks going down the road, sirens on, lights on, and people do not get out of the way. And last Thursday, as the ambulance is going through with the siren screaming, a truck pulling a boat makes a left-hand turn in front of them. Okay, guys, there is nothing going on in Craven County or New Bern that is that critical that we have all got to get to work that fast. Traffic is not that bad here after 30 years in major cities. Let's try to be more careful, that is, somebody's loved one, they are going to or taking to the hospital. We can be better citizens than that, and we all need to be careful of that. So this is a request to the citizens of this county, please be mindful of our neighbors.
Thank you. Agreed.
No report, Mr. Chairman?
I just have one thing to report, and that is that about... Six months ago, I notified everyone here that my grandson and his wife welcomed triplets into the world. Unfortunately, they were way, way, way premature. They were all under two pounds. Unfortunately, one little boy didn't make it, he passed away about two weeks later, and the other little boy and the other little girl have been in the hospital for 126 days. The good news is, they're home. They came home last Friday. I don't know how the parents are doing, but I know they're on pins and needles after watching these two little ones, but one is, the little boy is between seven and eight pounds, and the little girl is just under seven, and they're doing well. And so, a lot of people, including people in this room, prayed for them, and we very much appreciate those prayers, and if anybody wants to see what they look like, I got pictures. So that, anybody have anything else? No? Okay. Motion adjourned. Got a second? Adjourned.